Good evening, everyone. Let me say thank you to Mr. Rodriguez. Great, great presentation. Thank you so much. So I wanted to thank you, everyone here, because this shows that you are investing in High Point High School. We are on the same page. You're here to learn how High Point is doing, what is next, and how we, as a community, can support High Point High School students and families, and community. Our presentation today is to talk about where we are, where is High Point, in which direction we're going, what we're doing, and what are our plans in the near future. Our theme today is "Education Pays Off." Every day I talk to families and students, and my big point is staying in school is worth it. Education is an investment in many, many ways. There are about four talking points that I want to address this evening. So I'm gonna start with the welcoming and introductions in a minute. Then we're gonna talk about the state of High Point in academics, sports, and everything else that happens in school. Then we're gonna have, we're gonna talk about the new building and overview of it from the Capital Programs Office. And then we're gonna talk about how we, as a parent, as a community, or anybody else in the investment area, can support High Point. So in our program, we have about six points. So I'm gonna start with the welcoming and introduction. We're gonna have our keynote speaker, our Christian Flores from Channel 7. Then we're gonna, again, have an overview. We're gonna talk about the new building program or project, how we're gonna support High Point. And then we're gonna have about seven breakout sections where you're gonna have the opportunity to ask specific questions about the topic that you select. Each breakdown is about twenty minutes. After the breakout section, then we're gonna have some meals. Actually, now, when you go to the breakout sections, you will be able to grab the meal. So you can enjoy your meal while you are participating in the breakout section. So High Point has about ten administrators, nine administrators. We have two administrators per grade level. So we have Mr. Richmond and Ms. Poe. I know Mr. Richmond is here. Mr. Richmond? Thank you, Mr. Richmond. We have Mr. Richmond, Ms. Poe for ninth grade. Then we have Ms. McCoy and Mr. James. They are the tenth grade administrators. Mr. Burke and Dr. Villasilo. They are eleven graders. Dr. Villasilo's in the back. And twelve grade, we have Mrs. Garcia and Dr. Garcia Clouding. They might be getting ready for the breakout section, alright? So additionally to the administrative team, so we have about two hundred professionals that every day show up, ready to assist our students. So same thing with the council. We have about two counselors per grade level. Additionally to that, this year, we have two more counselors dedicated to talk or work with the students who are behind, those who are all cohort students. So that is new. As you can see, we have a couple of social workers, a ninth grade coordinator, in-school suspension lady, and school nurse. We have two school nurses, student advocates, community school coordinators. We have two attendance secretary this year. That's new also. A grade manager, psychologist, coordinator, a therapist, registrars. We have two. The P P W, the pupil personal worker. And we have college and career partners. So again, as I said, we have quite a number of professionals that every day are here to support our students. I want to acknowledge the presence of our VIPs. We have from Area 3. I don't call them my supervisors, but they are my supervisors. From Area 3, we have Dr. Ryans, Dr. Ryans. We have Mr. Batenga and Mr. Scott. They are big supporters for High Point High School. We also have our board member, Dr. Andorffel. Dr. Andorffel, thank you for coming. You wanna come in and address us for a minute? Additionally, we have Council Dernoga, City Council, and Delegate Peña Husseinas, Eddie Perry. Ms. Perry, thank you so much for coming tonight. And Delegate Taberas. So let me go back to Dr. Andorffel. Thank you so much for your support, and thank you for being here tonight.
Hello, yes. Hello, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Jachon, for giving me the opportunity to say hello to everyone this evening. For those of you who likely do not know me, my name is Dr. Tiffany Andorffel. And just in this past election, in November, I was elected to serve as your school board member. And so I'm now supporting schools in this district, including High Point and this neighborhood. So I think Laurel, the Belksville area, elementary through high school. I'm honored to have the opportunity to support you all. Let me give you a sense of the work that I'm hoping to be able to do. I'm really hoping to be able to engage with each and every one of you in any way that I best can. If you have any concerns, if you have any things that you would like to share with the Board of Education, you can contact me directly. I'll make sure that you have my email address. It is also accessible online. I also have a board phone number. My hope is that you get to know me and realize that I'm here to serve as an advocate for you. I actually am a product of Prince George's County Public Schools. Not High Point, but I went to Soolan High School on the other side of the county. So I went to Soolan High School. I went to Walker Mill Middle School in Capitol Heights. And I went to Columbia Park Elementary School and Allenwood Elementary School. So Prince George's County is home to me. And now, believe it or not, I'm a parent. My son now attends Yorktown Elementary School in Boogie. So this is a true opportunity for me. And when you think about tonight's theme about education paying off, I feel like I'm a clear product of that. Education has been extremely important to me. It's been instilled in me since I was a child, sitting at my great-grandmother's feet, at my grandmother's feet, my mother's feet. None of whom had the opportunity to complete high school. And so with me being the first person in my family to actually go on, complete high school, complete college, and now be able to serve in this role, not only to support my own children, but also all the children in this county and specifically in this district, I'm honored. And so my hope is that you will get to know me. You'll feel comfortable reaching out if you want to express any concerns. And I'll figure out the best way to support you all, not only now, but over the next four years of my term. So thank you all so much. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to stand before you. And again, my name is Dr. Tiffany Andorffel, and I'm proud to serve as your new board member. Have a good evening.
Thank you again, Dr. Andorffel. Thank you so much, again. So I design these. Everybody stand up for the presentation of callers. You might be seated. Thank you. So this time, I want to introduce our keynote speaker, Mr. Christian Flores from Seven News.
Thank you for applauding. My ego actually really needed that. But thank you for inviting me to speak to you all. My name is Christian Flores. I'm a reporter with Channel 7. I've been doing broadcast journalism for about ten years. So since about the time some of the students here were probably born, makes me feel old to think about the last time I was in high school. So great times being here. But the reason I wanted to talk, because I know the keynote speech, the main topic tonight is "Education Pays Off." And really want to talk about how continuing my education and staying focused and asking questions and all that, how that's helped me get to where I am right now, doing something that I really love doing. I get to get paid to essentially talk for a living. And that's something that's great, because I knew, I was very lucky. When I was about six or seven years old, I knew I liked to talk. And talk so much that every time we'd be on a car ride, car trip, or TV news would be on, I would talk and talk to my dad, just wondering what was going on. And he'd go, "Hey, you get paid to talk?" "No?" "Then shut up. Let the professionals talk." So since then, I, you know, I was like, "What is it? How did I get paid to talk? Is it something they're saying? What's their secret sauce? Is it the hair?" And luckily, I actually do have the hair. So that's helped me a lot. But what's helped me more is really just sticking with my education. You know, in high school, I really, really focused. I, you know, took all the AP classes I could. But I also did a lot of extracurriculars. I did Key Club, National Honor Society. I did sports. I just did everything that I could to really, I had a lot of interests. I wanted to be able to satisfy all those interests in a really meaningful way and figure out, you know, how exactly I could turn my love for talking into a profession. And I also wanted to get into the school of my dreams, Northwestern University, that are really known for their journalism school. So luckily, I applied myself at school, and then I got into Northwestern University. And that's really the first time I felt truly intimidated by, you know, am I smart enough for this? You know, I'm just surrounded by the smartest people that even to this day that I know. But in a situation like that, you really can't be scared. You gotta continue putting your head down. You gotta ask your professors questions. You gotta seek help. And luckily for me, I was able to stick to all of that, despite being intimidated by a lot of my colleagues, by my classmates. So I was just like, "How are we in the same school? They're miles smarter than me." But at the end of the day, I'm here speaking to you because of my commitment to my education and just gave you a brief history of my story. That's my story. Plenty of you have your own stories to write for the near future. Again, I was lucky that I really knew what I wanted to be when I was a child and trying to emulate the people I would see on TV doing what I'm doing now. But a lot of times, it does take a lot longer. I mean, I had college classmates who really didn't know what they wanted to do until senior year. And like, "Oh, you guys need to think about that a little bit right now." But, you know, if you're sitting there scared, not really knowing what you want to do, that's okay. That's why continuing your education really, really pays off. That starts here in high school, of course. I was lucky that I had teachers who were really dedicated to answering my trillions of questions that I had about every topic. I had coaches and sponsors for all my extracurricular activities who were really, really helpful in making sure that I stayed engaged, because my mind could wander off, as you're probably understanding from the speech right now. And in high school, I really found subjects that I loved. And I think that's the most important thing, is figure out what you love doing. Because ultimately, when you figure out what you love doing, that makes going to school, going to work, a whole lot easier. I loved English and I loved history. I would find myself writing extra journal entries for assignments, because either wanted to say what was going on or wanted to, you know, exercise my creative mind with fictional stories that I just thought of that are silly. That would be terrible. I'd be embarrassed to read right now. In history, I was always fascinated in politics and presidents and members of Congress and not just what they did while in the White House or in Congress, but who they were as people. So to this day, I still am able to exercise what I was able to learn in high school and with writing stories, trying to find creative ways to tell a story and to keep the audience interested with my interest in history, covering Capitol Hill, understanding current events. That's been such an important part of what I've been able to do. Now, I worked incredibly hard to make these interests really come to life, be able to interview interesting people, members of Congress, even athletes. I had a great interest in sports. I played football for a little bit in college. And I've been able to dabble a little bit in reporting on sports, interviewing Alex Ovechkin. And I think my colleagues who cover sports full-time would tell you that education is really important for what they do. If any of you are interested in sports, they've been able to interview Jaden Daniels or Juan Soto or Katie Ledecky or whoever the Wizards are gonna draft number one overall next year. So that's been something that, if you ask anyone who I work with, they're gonna be, they're gonna tell you that their education has really paid off in order for them to do something that they really, really love doing. Now, let me see. Sorry, I've lost my train of thought here. The other thing, I mentioned academics, but extracurriculars are really important. If you love debate or if you love drama, improv, those are things that you can use those skills while you're in school and use those in the real world. If you like solving problems, if you like working with your hands fixing things, there's always outlets to help with that, whether you continue here at high school or college or trade school. You can really find a way to make your education work for you or you build these skills while also doing something that you truly love. And that's something that's gonna be important for so many of you just moving forward, because, you know, I can't tell you how many times I've run into people who, they feel stuck at their jobs and they, you know, didn't really continue with their passions through education. And that's such an important deal, because again, with some of the stories I've had to deal with, there's a lot of pain and destruction. But you find an outlet to be able to, to make that work for you and still find a way to love what you do. Now, thinking about beyond a career, beyond education paying off, it also broadens your horizons. I mean, I've met some truly incredible people, both in work and out of work, that I'm still close with today. You really get out of your comfort zone. That's a major, major thing that you're gonna need when you're at work, figuring out how to, you know, deal with being outside of your comfort zone, solving problems, making things work for you. And you're also gonna meet some incredible people. I mean, I've met people from all over the world that I feel like I've been able to take something away from them. And you might be people who you disagree with. And I think that also is a skill where you learn to be more empathetic for where people are coming from. So by continuing your education, I mean, you can really make it work for you. And as the theme says, "Education Pays Off," where at the end of the day, you can really, you know, get paid for doing what you love. And that's really not possible without continuing your education. Thank you again for letting me come here and speak to you all. If you have any questions after this event, I'm sure I'll be around. And I appreciate you taking time to listen to me.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. I appreciate your time. And as you say, you are a good example showing that education pays off. So thank you again, Mr. Flores. I always show this little slide during my presentation with parents and community, because I want you to know, I was, I came to the United States after I finished my bachelor degree and I went through a couple of obstacles to get to the point where I am. And I always tell the story to my students so they can see that I am, I have gone through some of the obstacles that they have gone through. But again, education pays off at the end. Alright, so before we start talking about the state of High Point, I want to give you some context so you understand what is in place and why we are putting things in place to get the academic gains that we're getting at this point. So let me start saying our demographics. We are about eighty-two percent, eighty-three percent of students are from Hispanic background. And we have a mix of African-Americans, whites, Asians, and so on. So we are a very diverse school. If you walk in a hallway at High Point, you might be surprised how many languages you hear, you hear in a hallway. Last time we did the survey, it was about forty-four languages. So very diverse. That is a driven factor for our mission and our mission ambition. In our mission, we are maximizing the potential that students have to become productive citizens. In our mission, we are a diverse community that we're preparing our students for the 21st century. As you know, the skills that I require to survive when I finish high school are quite different that the kids need these days. So the idea is to get them ready for our college, get them ready for the global economy. When we make a decision, what we do, we base, we look at not only demographics, but also we look at our data, see what it represents. One of the points is the state test. So we look and see where are we in those states. Last summer, we checked that when we look at the English and math and WIDA, we need some help. So our students are answering the questions. Not only the multiple choice questions, but the extended response questions. So that's why our, and also when we look at the data, I'm sorry, on the right side, you see the WIDA test. The WIDA test is this test taken by students who are learning the English language at the same time that they are getting the credits to graduate. So if you combine, you see the red bars on the left side. That is the data about writing or responding and writing to the question. So it sounds like we need some help. That's why we come up with our instructional goals. So that is our goal this year, to focus our resources, professional development, and everything else to help students to elaborate more when they answer the questions. So and we also helping them to read better, understand better the context, so they are better prepared to respond those answers. Additionally, we are providing professional development to teachers on these three pillars. We are talking, we are not only working instructionally on the closed reading strategies and constructive responses, but also the social-emotional piece. So we are providing professional development on a monthly basis about strategies to support students who had some trauma or they need some assistance in the social-emotional piece. High Point is investing big time to prepare our teachers to support students when the social-emotional is a big need in a classroom. The student is not ready socially-emotionally, the instruction, getting the instruction is gonna be more difficult. And the third pillar, since we are so diverse, we are providing support to teachers on being culturally responsive. Again, we have a very diverse population. So we are, we need to be prepared how to deal with students or people who looks different, speak differently, look different. So that takes some training. And we are investing in those three areas. Additionally, to the professional development in those three areas, we have formed some teams. We have put a group of professionals targeting those areas that we think, that we think they're gonna help us to move to the next level. So we have a team of professionals working with students who were left behind for whatever reason. They missed a credit. They didn't complete what they are supposed to complete. So it's a team checking why these students are not at the grade level where they are supposed to. Same thing with college and career. There's a lot of resources out there that the students need to start tapping into as soon as they walk to High Point. We're not waiting to be eleven, twelve to think about what I'm gonna do when I finish. So every student should have a plan, a college and career plan or post-secondary plan as soon as they walk as a ninth grader to High Point. Since we receive so many English language learners or multilingual learners every year, so we have a team also supporting those students. Students come first day at High Point. They don't speak the language. So we have a team that supports them throughout the day, the week, and the month when they come. So they get acclimated and they get the resources that needed to survive in a new school, new culture, new language, new country, and so on. And the last initiative, the ninth grade team. If we support our ninth graders, chances are, they finish, they graduate. So that's why our, those are our four initiatives that we are putting a lot of effort into those four. There is something we call the School Performance Plan. Basically, it's the strategic plan of what we do at High Point or any school to make sure our kids receive the instruction and resources to be successful. As you can see, our three goals are English, improving English, improving math, and improve graduation. Those three are supported by our pillars, the social-emotional, instruction, and culturally responsive, and our professional plan. So that is the background so you have an idea what High Point is putting in place, what we offer to students and families to be successful each quarter. And this is the, this is the heart of this presentation. Where are we at? Where are we academically? So first quarter, we got thirty-one percent of students getting an E, at least at least in one, one of the content areas. This quarter, we went up two percent. However, A the A the stu- the number of students getting As, they stay the same. So basically, we losing ground on on the Bs, Cs, and Ds. Ninth grade is probably the the group that needs more help since they are the number of students with the greatest number of Es. Twelve, eleven, they are, they're sustained, they're not supposed to be in the twenties, but that's where we are. So that's uh, that's a real data. Ninth grade is where we have our major uh focus when we talk about support, like enrichment, touring, and so on. Attendance. Same thing with ninth grade, ninth grade has the lowest attendance. Attendance, the purpose, the in target is be above ninety-two, ninety-three percent. And you can see each grade level are now hitting the mark. And now we see, this is the breakdown by periods. Every, every day, a student receives four classes, four periods. You can see this second period, second quarter, it is outrageous. Students are not coming to class first period or they are coming extremely late. As a consequence, we have every day a whole sweep. Every student coming late to High Point, they go through, they come to the auditorium, get a pass before they are sent to class. So I'm gonna come back to this part because when you combine attendance, poor attendance, that is reflected in poor grades. If if we get support with attendance, parents send students to the school by seven-twenty, to be at the school at seven-twenty, I guarantee that grades are gonna go up. Now, if we talk about quarter one, quarter two, the absences, you see that the higher the absent, the average of absences, they lower the grade. So students with As, first quarter, for instance, the average was two, two days absent. And now it's almost three days absent. So again, education pays off when you attend it. Same thing with attendance and grades, you put it together, you can see the highest number of absentism, they lower the grade. Suspensions. Student have been, uh, second quarter had been a higher number of suspensions. And every time the students is suspended outside or or inside the school, you get notified, parents are called in, the student got, um, they have a meeting with the administrator, the parent and the student. However, when we look at the big picture, how many students are in route to be successful? And the rate is sixty-eight percent of students are close to pass at the end of the year. However, we still have, the the target should be hundred percent, not sixty-eight percent. For me, sixty-eight percent is too close to fifty. So we leave, we leaving a good number of students that are not gonna graduate or they are not gonna be promoted. On a positive note also, we have great, good number of students getting good grades in the ROTC, Homeland Security, the AVI detectives, in the advanced advanced programs. So when the students are vacated, you see it pays off. So this is uh, I wanna show this data to you. So when I come back in a minute, we're gonna talk about how you can support the student and the school. Class of twenty twenty-five, we already have submitted about four hundred college applications and counting. Student, every senior who is receiving any scholarship or any acceptance letter, they are supposed to report it to the council. So we are happy for class twenty twenty-five, also in sports. We participated in the different sports and we have been successful in many of them. Student-led organizations, we are proud of our organizations like Peer Forward, National, yes, National Honor Society, Student Government Association. These are organizations that they prefer our future leaders. Environmental science, I I wanna bring it up because we are, we were told that the, this program is gonna continue. At one, at one point, we thought it's not gonna continue, but we are back. So this is a success in terms of getting the program. We have invested um in our greenhouse, in in resources for the program. It's gonna stay at High Point. All the programs that we have at High Point, the Advanced Placement, we have about seventeen different AP courses. Those are courses that offer college credit if the student passes the test. Also, we have the AVI program, the CTE programs. Those are the career technical uh education. And these are the breakdown of the different programs that we have under the CTE or the AP. So as you can see, we have about fourteen-hundred-ninety, almost fifty percent of the population are enrolled in one of these programs. Alright, at this time, this is the end of my uh my data. I'm gonna come back again when we talk about how you can support High Point. At this point, I want to present our High Point Performance Art Department with the whole woodwind trio. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Alright, this time I'm gonna call Mr. Robert Nelson and Mr. Robelle from the Department of Capital Programs from Prince George's Community, Prince George Holy Schools to talk about our project of the new building for High Point High School. Thank you.
Good evening, High Point. Uh, my name is Dawn Holton. I'm the Senior Mechanical Engineer for Prince George's County Public Schools under the Department of Capital Programs. I'm also serving as the Design Department Supervisor for the school system. We also have here Mr. Jürgen Robelle. He's a architect in our department who will be walking with the architects on on contract to design you guys' new school. So right now, we're just gonna give you guys a quick update of where we are in the design process right now for this new project. This is a overview of our project team as it stands, and Shayla Jackson is our director. Uh, she is not here this evening. Mr. Will Smith is the Project Management Supervisor. He's also not here, and we already introduced ourselves, so. Project background. New school, new school location, the new High Point will be built on the same site as the existing school right here. Uh, the architectural design, we've already hired Grimmon Parker Architects. Uh, the firm that recently completed the design for Ellen Showa Middle School. Uh, Project Planning Committee will be chaired by Principal Chapone and composed of teachers, staff, students, parents, and High Point community members to collaborate closely with the design team to ensure the school reflects the needs and the visions of those it serves.
Okay. Dawn already introduced me. I'm Jürgen Robelle, the designer architect for letting this project who is Grimmon Parker Architects who's actually designing the building. Yeah. So the project status or planning, right now, we are finalizing the educational specification with High Point High School staff right now. Submitting specification for board and Maryland State Department of Education approval after that. Starting the new school design after all the approvals. The architects are currently conducting a feasibility study on three planning options. So an architectural feasibility study is an initial assessment that evaluates the viability and potential of a building project. Its results provide essential insights to support formal decision-making. The findings will be shared during the next project update meeting with the community.
So um, there are three major planning scenarios that are currently being evaluated. Uh, and we will have more information on uh the best option in a meeting forthcoming in the spring specifically for this project. So be on the lookout for that information. Uh, the information on the screen outlines the potential scenario number one, which will be a temporary relocation at the Northern Adelphi High School. So it outlines the steps of, obviously, that building having to be constructed first in order to provide swing space for the students that occupy this building here. So then after that, we would actually start the construction for this building while you guys will be in the news, the uh, the other building not very far from here. So the temporary relocation, that's what that is. And then project completion estimated would be in twenty thirty-two in this particular scenario. The second scenario planned uh will be a phased construction while occupied at High Point. So the construction will begin in this scenario with the construction of a new gym, the demolition of the previous, the existing gym, uh, and the new dining area and auditorium to move forward in phase two with the demo of this auditorium, fine arts areas, and a new classroom bar. And in phase three would be the demolition of the rest of the school and continuing on with the the completion of the classroom bar and the demo of the remainder of the building, the completion of the site work. In that ca- in this situation, the estimated time of completion would be twenty thirty-three, uh, mainly because of being, continue to occupy the existing site. The third scenario currently under study is to construct on the existing football field area. In this scenario, we still would have a completion date of twenty thirty-two, which is no different than scenario number one. Uh, but the new school will be constructed on the existing stadium site while the students continue to use the existing school. Once the building is ready, everybody will come back in and and the old building will be demolished. And after which the the site work will commence to replace the stadium at an alternate location on the site. So that's it, where we are right now. I know there may not be a ton of information, but we are working diligently with the architects to make sure that we are examining every single option to make sure that the best decision is chosen for this dynamic school and program that you guys have here, so. Um, again, as stated, you can refer to the information on the screen, and there will be a specific project meeting for this job uh coming up in the spring. So you guys will be able to see more information about that soon. And that's all we have.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited about this project, definitely. I know the community also. Alright, the fine, thank you again for for coming, um, Capital Program Department. So our final talking point is how we can support High Point. And there are many ways that I'm gonna go through. Our biggest, biggest concern is what can we do to support the students academically? So looking at the data, we need to bring the red bar from nine to twelve, all the way down to, you know, hopefully zero. So our recommendation is parents and and guardians, get access to the party view. Synergy is a well-known system, so get, get your party view so that way you can check at any time your students' attendance, grades, and and comments and everything that the teachers uh share with you. When you have access to party view, again, check assignments, student attendance for each period, and so on. Attendance, as I, as I showed originally, is is impacting big time grades. This is an example of how many students have been present. This is an example of how many students have been present every day. Out of three thousand, only two hundred had perfect attendance. That's too little. You can see at the bottom, about fifty-four students have sixteen or more days out. That doesn't count when the students is attending one class or two classes, not, but not all. So when you combine all of that, almost fifty percent of the, of the students are chronically absent. Forty-six percent. That means at least ten percent of the days that we have at school, they are not here. So it's critical that you send the student every day, no later than seven-twenty. And only that, send the student in uniform. Who is, is the big fight. Students and parents need to understand, know who is, I know it's cold out there, but who is isn't know know. We don't know who is in the building. We need, we need to be able to identify who walks in. And we have, we don't recognize the, the student, we ask questions. But if everyone put a hood on, that is a problem. We cannot see who that is. So, again, these two items, the attendance and the uniforms, that's how we can support High Point. So the school has some strategies in place to support students who are failing academically. So, uh, we tapping onto the teachers, we ask the teachers, um, how, what can support the need to offer students more opportunities to be successful. Additionally, we send jeopardy letters or attendance letters where we indicate to you how many, how many times the student is out and how many classes they are failing. If you are not receiving these letters, just check your mail. Somebody is intercepting your mail. But if your child had been absent, to give an example, fifteen days, you should have at least three letters. The counselor, the administrator and the, uh, PPW. If the student had been absent five days, you definitely receive one letter. So the majority of the students who have found more, the expectation of the parents, contact the, contact the school or talk to the student. Why, I'm here. So we also have tutoring, tutoring offered at the school. Not to count that the county offered free virtual tutoring for any subject. All right, so parents, as I said, on the right side, you can see the different things that you can do at home to support the student. But the biggest one is get the application, the synergy application, parent, parent view. Talking to the students, that is, that's critical. Checking grades and attendance. You are also entitled to contact the, the counselor and set up an appointment with your, with the teachers. All you gotta do is email the counselor or call the school and say, I wanna talk to the counselor or help me out to set up an appointment to talk to the teachers. And the meeting, they, they will schedule the meeting after the school hours. So you can meet with the teachers for ten, fifteen minutes and have an idea how the student doing. And you always are invited to our meetings. Every month, I have what we call the coffee and donuts with the principal. That's the last Friday of each month at nine AM. We just come to the different meetings. We have grade level meetings and you are more than welcome to come. And those are more like one-to-one meetings. So you can discuss with administrators and counselors the different, uh, activities or different, um, things that they are doing to support each grade level. So that's it for me. Uh, I appreciate you have come tonight and hopefully you have a better idea today what High Point is about, what we're doing, where we are in terms of academics and how you can support High Point. At this time, we're gonna have about seven, eight different breakout sections. Please take advantage. These are the small meetings where you can ask the presenter all questions about the grade level or the different topic that they are talking about. So thank you again for your participation. My, this is my, um, information, Miguel Chacon. At PGCPS, you can send me an email at any time. So again, thank you for coming and I hope I see you in a coffee and donuts at the end, uh, at the end of the month, the Fri-, the last Friday. Thank you again, thank you for your participation. So the meals and drinks, they will be in the different rooms. If you go, let's say, to the evening virtual program, room one or three, they're gonna have the meals right outside. So feel free, after twenty minutes, we're gonna call over the P S system to go to the next breakout section. So let's, let's, in the next five minutes, let's get to the first section and we stay there for twenty minutes. Thank you again, have a good evening.